Good morning. At this time, we'll call to order the meeting of the October 28, 2013, meeting of the Rutherford County Regional Planning Commission. If you would stand with us, please. Commissioner Rhonda Allen will lead us in our prayer and our pledge. Rhonda.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for the privilege that we have to live in this country and live in this county, and we ask for your wisdom and your guidance in all the decisions that we make. And, Lord, we hope that we honor you in our leadership abilities and how we try to lead the folks in the direction of this community. Lord, we do have several members who have serious health issues, and we just want to continue to lift you, lift them up to you for that. So, we ask that you will put your healing hand on them and continue to bless them and just bring them back to full health. It's in Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. Gal, let's call a roll, please.
Rhonda Allen.
Here.
Jim Everwater. Veronica Buchanan. Will Jordan.
Here.
Mike Kush. Craig Lynch.
Present.
Chip Pinion.
Here.
Pettis Reed.
Here.
Steve Sandlin. Mike Vaught.
Here.
Jeff Phillips.
Present.
We have a quorum.
Thank you, Gal. This time, we need to approve the minutes of our September 9 meeting. A call on our vice chair, Craig Lynch.
Mr. Chairman, I saw Mike motion that we do approve those September 9 minutes.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That motion carries. Doug, any items withdrawn or deferred?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. We do have one item that's being deferred off of this agenda. That'd be the item for site plan approval of Bradley Creek Missionary Baptist Church. The plan itself, what they're asking to do, is relatively straightforward. The issue came about where they're wanting to do the addition. There's some waterline issues there, and so they're gonna have to probably do a little bit of a redesign on that, but weren't gonna be able to have the plan redesigned in time for today's meeting. So, they've asked that to be deferred into the next meeting.
Okay. Item number eight has been deferred. Bond and plat extensions, item A. Davenport Station, Section 1, Phases 1 and 2, request a 12-month plat extension. Eric?
Davenport Station, if, you know, I'm sure you guys remember, this was brought in in '07 originally, and so, and there's still nothing on the ground. Talking with the engineer, I think they're, they're thinking over the next couple of months, they're gonna start with their first section. This was originally a PUD. I just wanted to mention to you guys, I don't think we have to do anything on this today, but just to kinda bring this up, the original PUD talked about a red light at Rucker Road and 231 where this, the main interest to this development is. And I think the original agreement was something to the tune of after three years, they would put a light in. Well, that was about three years ago. So, as they come in for their first section, I think we need to probably freshen that agreement up on what, as far as that traffic study, because it's, it was kinda odd how it worked out. I mean, a three-year time limit, I don't think we ever set a start date on that. And so, I would've assumed it would've been from Planning Commission approval, but there's no need for them to put a red light if they haven't built anything. So, I just kinda wanna bring that up to you guys to, we'll be kinda looking and maybe try to have some options when they bring that in and discussing with the engineer what the best plan is for that, to have, have something that, that works. We, we don't want a red light out there before we need one, but we sure don't wanna need one and not have one. So, so, we're, we're looking at that. And I just wanted to make sure you guys were, were aware that that's, that's still in with this plat. But, but there's nothing, nothing on the ground, and like I said, it's, they're, we're anticipating maybe by the spring to have something out there.
That was, when it was approved, they anticipated in three years, been big time.
Yes, sir.
So, that stopped, and now, we're going into it again. So, we're looking three years into the future. The Kubota Place was even going there.
Yes, sir.
For a while.
Yes, sir. And it's, and of course, it's not, it's not anymore. It's actually not even a part of this, the new, the new PRD. I, I think in the future, instead of maybe a time limit, we may wanna put a time limit and a lot requirement or something. We'll, we'll look. I'll try to have some, look around and see what other people do. But, you know, a time limit can be, you know...
It could be two or three more years yet.
It could be. I, I think we should do an either or, you know, maybe like a, you know, a couple of years, or maybe 70 lots, or, you know, seven lots, whatever you guys wanna do, but...
What'd the city do if you were in something, 50% of the lots are under construction or something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
How many lots and how many sections, Eric?
I don't, I don't remember exactly.
The overall development, as it was originally approved, had townhouses in it. It was, it was several hundred, if I remember right. Now, what they're, what they're asking for the extension today was only for the first section of the subdivision, the first couple of phases. Next month, at the night Planning Commission meeting on the 18th, and I'll, I'll talk a little bit more about that later, but the, they're coming back through with an amendment basically to the original PRD, not including the sections they're talking about today, but basically taking out the townhomes and everything, just really looking more at a single-family element for the area they're looking at. But, that'll be an amendment to, to what was originally approved. So, you'll, we'll have some more discussion on that at that point.
It's, but I think it's around 500 units total. It's 140 acres, I think, site total.
But, as far as right now, you're good with extending this plat for this portion of it?
I think so. I mean, nothing's changed in the last six years, and we've extended it.
I'm gonna get motion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 6B, 12 Corners, Section 3, request for a 12-month plat extension.
12 Corners is, is pretty similar, except it's not a PRD. It's just a standard subdivision, and nothing's on the ground. But, we've, we've been, the developer's been keeping the plat current by doing extensions every year.
Motion to approve?
Second. Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Thank you. Item 7, submitted for final plat approval. Item A, Peter Baltimore, lots 2 and 3. The item number is 13-2042. Two lots on 7.49 acres, zoned RM, located along Deer Run Lane, Kenneth Baltimore applicant. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. This plat probably looks familiar to you. This was, the waiver for this particular development was considered at your last meeting in September, September 23. Essentially, what the applicant is doing is taking a couple, it's part of settling an estate. These properties are along Deer Run Lane. As you can see on the, on the plat on your screen, he's just creating these two lots here, lots 2 and 3, along Deer Run Lane. Both have road frontage. The issue that they had with the waiver request was that the lines in the area could not support a fire hydrant. But, before he went through all the expenses for plat approval and all that, he wanted to make sure he'd be able to get the waiver, do what he was wanting to do. The plat, or the waiver, excuse me, was granted approval at the September 23 meeting. They'll need to add a note on the plat to that effect, just basically saying that that was granted. Also, Consolidated Utility has asked that they put on the private service line easements on this plat, and they would also have to add a line for the chairman's signature. But, besides that, it's pretty much the same as what you saw last month. It's in pretty good order, once they handle those issues. I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Mr. Baltimore, Kenneth Baltimore, is here. If you've got any questions of him.
If I'm not mistaken, I know Mr. Baltimore Senior's passed away, and the two brothers are just splitting this field up to go with each one of their houses. There's no more construction going on or anything like that. So, with that, I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion to approve and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That motion carries. Item 7B, re-subdivision of map 136, parcel 69.08. The item number is 13-2040. One lot on 1.41 acres, zoned RM, located at 3966 Philcrest Drive. Charlie B. Mitchell, Jr., is the applicant. Request includes a waiver to the fire hydrant location requirements in the Rutherford County subdivision regulations. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. As you stated, this property is along Philcrest Drive. We were just talking about the Davenport Station subdivision, which is actually all this land down here. This is actually all part of the Davenport PUD. Basically, what they're doing is cutting off this one lot where there's an existing house from the rest of the development. Oak Meadows Drive, as you see here, will actually, based on their master plan, will kind of extend down through here, which is why you see the curve of the road the way that it is. Something that, as we were looking at the plat, that came to our attention was, you know, this existing lot, while them cutting this out like this, it was leaving a remainder here of about 1.9, close to 2 acres of land, which would have to have been a separate lot. Since that point, we've talked with the engineer. They've actually combined it with the larger property around it. I believe to the west is the one they ended up using here to make this all part of one tract. And then, that leaves this remainder area here, which is what they're asking for the plat for. Now, as far as the, what they're proposing to do here, we really don't have any real issues with it. One of the issues that they are running into, however, is the fact that the lot as it lays here is not within 1,000 feet of an existing fire hydrant. Now, after speaking with Consolidated Utility, the, the line along 231 is able to support a fire hydrant and is able to be within 1,000 feet. But, also, the 6-inch line right here in front of the development is also able to, to hold a fire hydrant. They've asked for the waiver, and Mr. Reed with the SEC is here to, to help answer any questions and to further explain. But, basically, since the applicants are wanting to move forward with the, the sections we just granted the extension for, for Davenport Station, they were hoping to not have to do a fire hydrant here, but put the fire hydrant in as that other development, the Davenport Station development continued on, then the lot would be within 1,000 feet of a hydrant. I basically told Mr. Reed at that time, he could make his case. Our preference would be just to go ahead and put the fire hydrant in, especially if the lines out there can support the hydrant. But, I'll leave that to your discretion. And again, Mr. Reed is here that can help with his applicant, his client's position on that. So, besides that issue, the plat itself is, is in fairly good order.
Thank you, Doug. Jamie, is that yours?
It's it. Joe, you have a question. I'm Jamie with SEC. Yeah, like Doug alluded to, the one-lot plat is an existing house on that one-lot deal currently, and they would like to extend the fire hydrant, put it off at a date when they're putting that road in this next year, hopefully, preferably first of the year after this rezoning goes through. I hate to put one up front, then the, the design show one, two lots back in there for the subdivision. I'd rather wait now and put them where they're all designed for the whole subdivision versus one lot at this time, is what we'd like to.
Does this house still belong to the develop, the people who own the whole tract of property?
Yes, sir.
So, it's not like you've got a homeowner there who's being hung out to dry, though, I mean?
Yeah. He's got somebody buying the house, and he's selling the lot off to somebody.
Was this house lot figured in the original development as to be townhouse or business or something right there?
No, sir. If, what I remember is that it was, we had different lots tracked off through there, and this was not a town, this was residential. And as the years went on, he decided to keep that house there. He'd talked about it numerous times, but when we did the PRD, we just showed lots going through there, and we modified it where he could keep. We actually lost a couple of lots just so he could keep that house there. So, he, we actually changed it from the original, but kept the road layout and the configuration. I think it was like three lots there, but he wanted to keep that existing house.
How many lots are gonna be total once it's developed, what you're talking about?
Uh, well, you, we're eliminating all the townhouses on it, and I wanna say originally, if I'm not mistaken, and it's a large number, I think it's 529, 529 lots that are originally approved. Not lots, units, if you total all the townhomes and all the lots for the subdivision. And I think after we, doing the, the new putt amendment and stuff, PRD and stuff, that it's somewhere around 400 or something. So, we're actually losing, you know, 50 to 70 lots. Not off the top of my head, I know we're losing numerous units by placing residential lots versus townhomes in there.
If you done, like, a little quick scenario draft or whatever, how many other fire hydrants you're gonna have in there?
Well, no, it's, there's a design. CUD's got a, a master design of that whole entire subdivision.
So, you hadn't seen that?
Well, I've got it at the office, but not of the new PRD. They've got it of the existing. We're not changing anything up there where it's around that house. So, but I don't wanna, and I hate to put a road in and, and put a fire hydrant out in front of his house, and he's gonna have one right across the street when they put the road in.
How long before you'll have the other fire hydrants in?
When, I, I mean, I hate to say a date off the, right. He's, they're anticipating starting the first of the years what they're anticipating starting.
So, this time next year, you should have one?
Fire hydrants. And it's an existing house. It's not like we're building two new houses there. It's existing house, existing condition. We'd like to postpone it for, while we're doing the subdivision with the subdivision, if we could.
Doug, is it possible for us to grant some type of a temporary waiver for a year or something like that? Is it possible?
I, I don't know how practical it would be with this, because once the subdivision's recorded, I mean, if he decides he doesn't want to put the fire hydrant in, we really have nothing that we could, it's not like we could hold a building permit for it, because there's already a house there. So, I don't know really enough if that's practical at this point. That's, I mean, that was kinda the reason I think staff would just say, just go. I, I understand what the applicant's saying, but at the same time, and the subdivision has been on the books now since about 2007, 2008, and we have yet to see any development on it. Now, things do appear to be moving forward with it, you know, granted. I'll, I'll, I'll give them that. And I do think that there will be some activity here, but there's, unfortunately, there's no guarantee in that.
Well, if we approve this today with the fire hydrant, how long do they have to get the fire, they have to put the fire hydrant in before they can record that plat?
That would probably, that's the only leverage we would have at that point. Yes, sir?
I was trying to think. It's, I mean, fire hydrants aren't cheap anymore.
No, I know.
It used to be $1,000, $1,200. You know, depending on the size of the pipe, you can spend up to $5,000 bucks.
And I think you pay CUD, if I'm not mistaken, Jennifer's here, but I think you pay them a fee now, and they'll put the fire hydrant in. Is that 25,00, four? It's $4,000.
Is that regardless of pipe size? No, at one point in time, there was a schedule, if you had a 30-inch pipe, you had to pay for a 30-inch couple. That's the cheapest, the cheapest it gets.
Yeah. Which, you're right. It used to be, you know, 1,800, $2,000, $2,200. Is there any way we could put it on the preliminary plat requirement or something? Construction Phase 1, as soon as it starts, first fire hydrant being installed? I'm just...
Do I understand, though, that this house that's there, he's getting ready to sell that to a new homeowner?
Y- yes, sir. Yes, sir. He's, he's looking at selling it.
All for himself, living there. It's just be a new homeowner that's in that house.
Yes, sir. Yes. It's an existing house. He don't, he doesn't live there now.
Doug, past history, if it would support a fire hydrant, have we been given any waivers? We got past history in that?
Generally, what I tell applicants, and of course, now I haven't gone through all the waivers, you know, I haven't done that recently, but generally, through my experience, if the line can support a hydrant, you've required them to install it. Through my experience since I've been working with the county, I can't sit here and say that you've never granted one where it couldn't support one, but through my experience here, it's always been if the line can support a hydrant, then you, you require them to put it in.
This is a little different, though. Actually, if one's going in there within the next year, you know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to require them to put one in there now if one's already going in and planned to go in. That's the reason I was asking, is it possible for us to grant a temporary stay of execution?
Right. And, well, and I, well, like I said, I, I think there's merit with the idea. Unfortunately, if, if the development doesn't happen and the plat's recorded, at that point, what, I mean, what, what leverage do we have to, to enforce it, I guess, is my concern.
Jamie, can you position this fire hydrant close enough to this house where you can use it in your development? Just get it up around, get him in a thousand-foot, where when you do come through, you'll be able to use it?
Possibly, but there's gonna be a lot of construction going on, for one. I would, I, I really don't want the fire hydrant up to be around where all the, the new roads and infrastructure's gonna be coming, because it's gonna come right, if you're looking at that lot, right to the left of that lot, it's gonna be a brand-new road, and they're gonna be redoing some stuff out there at that entrance. And then, you're gonna be dealing with an existing hydrant that's gonna be in all that construction. I'd rather...
That you're gonna be using water for, for construction?
Yeah. But, you know, I'd hate to post, but, you know what I mean? A fire hydrant stuck up out, where they're gonna be putting curb gutter and sidewalks and stuff like that, and it may, you know, more than likely, it'll end up being placed somewhere that we have to remove it or relocate it in the first place, because it'll be stuck in the middle of a fire, a sidewalk, or will it be between the curb and the sidewalk? You know, so it, it, I'd rather wait to do it. It makes more sense to do it during construction of the subdivision. I mean, if I...
My, my problem here, though, is, you know, just this morning, we've, we've issued two extensions already on plats here. And I understand you say that we are gonna start these, hopefully, this next year, but we don't know. And, you know, we just spent a long time here last year and, and this year too, talking about sprinkling and, and everything in the world here, talking about fire hydrants and thing. And now, here we are, getting back into extensions, our waivers on a situation like this, and now, we got a line here that does support it. And I understand your situation there, too. But, you know, you do have a line there that does support a fire hydrant, and then you've got a new owner that's coming in here that's buying his house. And then, if he has a problem, and there's not a fire hydrant there, and he loses, where do we fit in? I mean, that's just a question I have.
Well, how old's that house? The house has been there since the 70s or 60s or something?
I think so. I think it's...
Eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
The house has been there 30 years.
And it's, and there's not a fire hydrant out there. So, and it's existing house, we're not, we're just looking to push it. The time and...
We're always scared to death of setting a bad precedent, but I can understand. Fire hydrants are coming. That one's probably gonna end up, like you said, in the wrong place, be in the middle of a driveway.
And they've already spent a fortune, you know, they've spent a fortune to pay CUD to design all the fire hydrants out there, and, and me to design this subdivision, so...
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver, even though I do have a little bit of uncomfort with it, but I can understand.
If you could, Mr. Jordan, this is not just for the waiver, for the plat, too. So, you'd be approving the plat with the waiver. Okay, thank you.
Staff have a recommendation, Doug? You gonna stay away from it?
Well, no. I, I mean, I think staff's preference, I think I even made that clear in the comments that I had written, that we felt that there should be one installed. But, I mean, if that's the direction you all wanna go, that's perfect. I understand where Mr. Reed's coming from. In all fairness to him, I did tell him before the, when he first submitted this, and we were talking, looked at it and talked about it, I told him that, you know, we would, he could make his case, but we'd still recommend one be put in, so...
Doug, Doug, pardon me. Is there any way we can make them put up a bond for the fire hydrant for a year if it's not, if the roads aren't in in a year, then they have to put it in? Could we do that?
I think you could do that, yeah. That's an option.
If we can do that, I'll second the motion.
I'm, I'll make an amendment that we...
I'll include that in my motion.
All right.
That sounds good. We require a bond for the fire hydrant.
Or if you wanna second that, I hate to steal it.
No, no. You second right ahead, Steve.
That's a good idea.
Is it a 6-inch line, so it would be a $4,000 requirement on the bond?
I hope CUD didn't go up on their fire hydrants.
And then, once the, I mean, once it's in, then, once we know the fire hydrant's going in, then we can just release the, the bond.
Right.
Yeah.
Jamie, is that doable?
My name's David Lowery. I represent the owner. I'm anxious, doable. But, you know, we've worked with the Planning Commission for, since '07 now, and this is an existing house. And actually, the gentleman who's buying the house is leasing the house from us now, so it's not like we're selling the house, and we've got somebody new moving in. This is, we would've already transferred the house to him if we didn't have to come through and do this kinda plat situation. So, which we understand. We're not, you know, opposed to this, to this process. It's just to then put out a bond for a $4,000 hydrant when we're about to put in hydrants anyway, I mean, i-if that's the only way we can get it approved, we'll agree to it. But, we would rather just wait on the whole thing until we put in the development, if you guys would, would please consider that.
The situation you're putting us in, the house burns, somebody dies, we've approved something that should've been put in.
Yeah.
That's bottom line.
Mr. Lynch, I understand that. I, I...
This, you got caught in the crack with this having to come back up here.
Right. I, I totally understand that, and I appreciate your position. And if it were a new lot, or if we were selling this off and, and plating a new lot beside it, I think that would be a little bit different. But, this is a house that's been there for, you know, 20 years.
I understand.
Yeah. So, I mean, it, it's just, it's a little bit different situation than, than I think just if it was a lot, or if the remainder was a lot. I would understand that if the remainder was gonna be developed into a lot. But, since we're absorbing that into another, we've already done that, absorbed that into another parcel, we just would appreciate your consideration on that.
I think you pointed out, though, the best, that you've been working with the Planning Commission since '07, and we, you know, it's been sitting here six years and, and nothing's happened. So...
Yes, sir.
And our five years, and our expectation is that it probably does happen, but we wanna be sure.
Yes, sir. I totally, I totally understand that position. We, we would've loved to have done this subdivision a couple of years ago, and it's just been, it's been a tough couple of years for everybody, not just us, probably members of the Planning Commission. I, I understand that. But, we're so close to getting this done, and to put another $4,000 up or, you know, it just, we would appreciate a little, a little leeway there, if we could get it.
What about putting this transition of, moving this property to somebody else's name down the road about nine months, so Jamie can get his pipes in? Don't do this right now. Wait till then, and then you can have your fire hydrant where you need it. Is there a sense of urgency? This has to be done?
Well, we, we have a, the urgency is we have a buyer that's approved by a bank to buy it. So, yeah, there's urgency. We, we would, we would really...
Change that to a lease purchase, where he will, where he can have it. When Jamie gets his act together, he gets fire hydrant in.
Yeah.
Purchase would still require a plat.
Yeah, I...
The kicker is, they could sell that entire little tract right there and never be a question asked. If there weren't moving the boundary lines, it wouldn't be creating a new subdivision lot.
That's correct. Yes.
It's already on the move. That's not...
No, his, his point was, and...
Just go back and rethink this somehow, just...
Yeah. His point was, if, if the motion moves forward with the bond requirement, I think he wanted to be clear that we were, I mean, bonds, first of all, just kind of a generic term. We'd probably be looking at a letter of credit, something to that effect, and that it would be for the installation of a fire hydrant within 1,000 feet of this particular lot, not all the subdivisions, or not all the fire hydrants of the subdivision, just to make sure it's worded properly, that the bond would be for the installation of this, and when the other fire hydrants in the area were installed that were in 1,000 feet of, that that bond could be released. Is that pretty much what you, yes, sir? Okay. But, again, that's, that's, if you just approve it without that, then that's really kind of a moot point.
But, your recommendation is no.
Our recommendation was to install it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Where are we?
Got a motion and a second on the floor, I believe.
Let's redo the motion, kinda restate it. Where are we, Gal?
We have a, a motion and then a mo-second if, if it's gonna be worded a certain way.
I think we've got the motion and the second.
Yeah, I agree to amend my motion to the verbiage that Mr. Vaught said.
Whatever Josh says goes.
I was just raising the question. We said bond.
I, I said bond, and lot, letter of credit's fine.
I'm just saying, we wanna be clear. Is it 12 months? Is it, or is it just it's bonded until they put in any fire hydrant within 1,000 feet, or that they put in the fire hydrants under the Davenport Station plan, or the fire hydrant nearest to this piece of property in the Davenport Station plan, or precisely what? Because I know Eric runs into all kinds of issues of when to release these bonds and so forth. So, the clear we can be on that problem.
But, if I live in it, I can do it.
This is getting really foggy. It's gonna put a hardship on staff to figure all this out, in my opinion, keep up with the letter of credit when the time runs out. Who enforces it, all that kinda stuff?
Okay. We supposedly have a motion and a second, and I'm still not sure, I understand what the motion is. So, let's say it again, so we know what we're voting on.
How about we just, let's just do this. How about we just clear the deck and just withdraw the motion, withdraw the second, and then you can start over from that, rather than trying to determine what, what's already out there. And that'd be my recommendation of this.
It's probably a good idea.
I'll be glad to withdraw any motions I've made so far.
All right. Any, the second, and let's start all over again. All right. The motion and the second has been withdrawn. Now, we're back to square one.
Okay. I'm, I'm gonna make my case then for not approving the waiver. I can't believe that when they look at the master plan, and Steve had alluded to this, on how the fire hydrants are gonna be laid out, that they can't calculate it in such a way to incorporate this hydrant into their overall plan and not have it seriously obstruct construction. I think the risk is too great. You're, yes, it's an existing house, but you're selling it to a new homeowner, which is the point that Pettis made. So, I, I don't see any foreseeable reason with lines supporting it that we couldn't do it now, because I don't see the difference in putting up a $4,000 bond versus spending the $4,000. And, you know, you're gonna have to do it anyway, so I just say incorporate it into the master the master plan. So my motion is to deny.
Now, we have a motion.
Well, hold on, just before, let's just make sure we understand, the, what we're looking at here is not just the waiver, it's for the whole plat. Now, you can make a motion to approve the plat without a waiver, and they just have to install the hydrant.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
The plat.
The plat.
And deny the waiver.
I'll second.
And a second.
You know, they're gonna have to tie into a line up here on Field Crest Drive, Roach Meadow, and, and that first hydrant's gonna land somewhere down that street, that line's not even there yet, and so.
I think this line's in existence.
I know what the line out there, but you wouldn't have a subdivision on the very, very corner of your subdivision, you'd have one some length down, so you catch a, a, a large number of houses right there, you're gonna end up with a, an additional fire hydrant, or they're gonna have to go out there just blindly putting a pipe for a ways down across that field and not know where it goes.
Ready to vote? We have a motion to approve the plat, deny the request, uh, for a fire hydrant waiver.
We do a roll call.
Uh, yeah, we've had two requests to do a roll call, so that's what we'll do. Gal, call to roll, please.
Rhonda Allen?
Aye.
Will Jordan?
No.
Mike, I'm sorry, Craig Lynch?
Yes.
Chip Penyon?
Yes.
Pettis Reed?
Yes.
Steve Sandlin?
Aye.
Mike Vaught?
Yes.
Jeff Phillips?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number C, um, seven C, Owen Rogers subdivision, section one, the item number is thirteen dash twenty thirty-eight, three lots on fifteen point one-three acres, zoned RL, located along Allison Road, Alisona Road. Owen Rogers is the applicant, uh, request includes a waiver to a fire hydrant location requirement in the Rutherford County subdivision regulations. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, these next two items that you had before you were, uh, a little later added on to the agenda that you have before you, which is why you don't see them in your, uh, comments, but, uh, what, basically, they were timely filed, uh, there was just a little, um, miscommunication among staff about getting them on the agenda, so that was, that had nothing to do with the applicant. Uh, just so everybody understands, this, these were submitted under our older subdivision regulations, the previous ones in effect before October the first, uh, so we would consider them under those regulations, not the ones that are currently in effect. Uh, basically, what you're seeing here is a fifty-foot ingress egress easement that accesses off Alisona Road, these are three lots right here, they're all five acres or greater. Uh, really, the only issue that we have here is the fact that the closest fire hydrant is just touch over a thousand feet to that first lot, and the line out there can't support any additional hydrants. Uh, with that, uh, the only other issues with this plat, if the waiver is granted, this is a similar situation to the, the last ones we're looking at, with the exception of the, the lines being a little more, uh, the, the lines not be able to support the hydrant, uh, basically, what they would need to do is put a note on the plat saying that the plat was granted. Also, uh, when the original submittal was shown to us, there were actually little lines that were going from this label right here to this easement, while I can look at this and know that that's what that's referring to, someone that doesn't look at plats on a regular basis may not know what that means, so we just asked them to go ahead and put those lines back on there to identify this fifty-foot access easement. Uh, this plat and the next one, it's actually the same tract of land, it's a pretty large acreage tract, but, uh, they're asking for a separate access, uh, fire hydrant waiver and a separate access, two more lots on the next, uh, item on the agenda, but, uh, just so you, you understand, it's the same property, basically. Uh, so with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
So really, it's a five-lot subdivision. They've got it broken down as a three-lot and a two-lot, but it's really a five.
Correct. But, I mean, but they're doing it based on our regulations that we've got, so that, I mean, it's, what they're doing is, is legal, so there's nothing wrong with it, and they are large acreage tracts.
The private easement, how long's that gonna be?
Um, total? It's about thirteen hundred feet or so, roughly. This property here is, is remaining, but this has access, direct access to the road, so it's not a, not a problem.
I guess I'm just thinking about our rules regarding how many lots off of a private easement.
Right.
That apply to five-acre tracks or no?
No, it, it still applies to five-acre tracts. Now, basically, at this point, he can do, he can do these three, then even on today's regulations, he could do these three.
Uh huh.
Uh, now, the, uh, the big reason he got this in before the October first date, when the new regulations took effect, was because this would've kicked in the sprinkler requirement.
Gotcha.
But, uh, but again, what he did, he did get it in under the old regulations. Now, the other one that we're gonna see next on the agenda is a separate access easement from this, it's a little further down.
Yeah, it's all different easement.
Right, it's on a completely different easement, right, it's not the same easement, so.
Okay.
There's, there's, that issue's not there for them.
Same, same large parcel, but a, really a different deal then, is what you're saying.
Right, I mean, this is basically the tract right here off our G I S, this is Al, this is Alsona, this is thirty-one A, uh, you know, we're looking at property up here, the other one's down in this area.
Well, it meets all the requirements, you said, that could not, the line would not support another fire hydrant, so.
That's right.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Considering with all staff comments.
And that's with the waiver as well, correct?
Yeah, with the waiver.
Motion to approve and a second. Any other discussions?
And that was subject to staff comment.
Yeah.
All of us in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Motion carries. Item D, seven D, Owen Rogers subdivision, section two, the item number is thirteen dash twenty thirty-seven, two lots on twenty-one point nine acres, zoned RL, located along Horton Highway, Highway thirty-one dash A. Owen Rogers is the applicant, request includes a waiver to the fire hydrant location requirements in the Rutherford County subdivision regulations. Doug?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, basically, the situation here is, is as I described in the last plat, uh, when I was talking about the, the arrows to the easement in the last plat, this is what I was referring to, uh, these little arrows here that are, that identify this easement, were for some reason off the other plat. Uh, basically, what they have to do on this one is just put a note on the plat, if the waiver is granted, uh, they are asking for the fire hydrant waiver. Uh, when you look at the, uh, the overall map, you can see, this is, uh, you can see this track right here, that is this right here, so this easement's coming along, put the map back up here, sorry, this easement basically is coming along down through here and then opening up back in this area, so they're still seeing quite a bit of acreage down here that's left alone, but, uh, it's these two lots in this area is what we're looking at right now. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
To get to lot number four, you come down easement and it makes a ninety-degree turn in front of lot number five, if I'm looking at this correctly?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
You take a fifty-foot easement and put a perfectly ninety-degree turn, you're not gonna stay in that easement, I wouldn't think, I mean, we ran it out on that one.
Well, it's a fifty foot, right, now, it is a fifty, understand, the easement itself is fifty foot, now the road doesn't have, the driveway didn't have to be fifty, now, now, that, that.
In lot number five, and they wanna be tough, and they go out and drive a stake at fifty feet.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we ran the exact same problem out on Crane Road, when the guy put a twenty-five foot easement, when, when he went around the corners, the property line.
Right.
It could, it wouldn't work.
Now, understand, too, but I, and I, I know what you're talking about with that situation, of course, that was for larger vehicles and trucks and everything, serving a business that was on the property, I mean, this is, and actually, looking at this now, this forty-foot minimum setback, this will have to be fifty foot, just because of that easement, they'll need to make that change here, I just, just, just now saw that, but.
You come to a ninety-degree turn, that's a perfect corner, you know, and you're just about a U-Haul truck moving in or something, you're gonna have some issues right there, is all I'm saying. I, I, you know, they might oughta, if they can live with that, I'm just pointing out that you get a couple neighbors not getting along, someone go down and drive, put the post in the ground exactly at fifty feet.
Is that gonna, is this soils there, is that soils there that I'm looking at right there?
Yes, right, this one right here, that's soils there, right there for lot five.
Or they're gonna end up swinging out, and the soils there.
You get a load of trusses or something coming in.
I mean, just look, I mean, I understand where you're coming from, Mr. Jordan, but, I mean, if the driveway is like ten, twelve feet, I mean, that's still gonna give them quite a bit of room in here to get that around, because like I said, the, the, the drive itself doesn't have to be fifty foot, it's just the actual width of the easement.
It depends on if there's a fentril there, or any shrubbery or, you know, foliage growing out, but I'm just pointing out, it looks like it could be a problem to somebody at some point in time, but free world, they, they can get that.
Other questions?
I guess we couldn't require it since that soil there is right there, could we? That's all it'll support in here. Maybe it wasn't dead in.
Beats all requirements?
Best, I mean, besides the fire hydrant waiver, yes, sir.
And he won't support it?
No.
I guess, make a motion to approve it with the, let the buyer beware of that curve right there, I suppose.
Have a motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Other discussion?
And that, is that, just so I, so I'm clear, is that including the waiver request on the plat?
It is.
Okay.
And subject to any staff comments.
All of us in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? And motion carries, thank you. Item number eight has been withdrawn, uh, now we're down to staff reports and comments, let me just kinda throw out a reminder, Doug kinda mentioned it a little bit earlier, though, our November, our schedule, November the eleventh meeting has been rescheduled for Monday, November the eighteenth, at six P M. at the courthouse, just a reminder. Doug?
I really have nothing further, unless you all have some questions or comments or anything. Eric, I don't know if you have any.
Do we do meal on, at Thanksgiving, or do we do meal?
We usually do it after, uh, I think that last year, we started doing it kinda between Thanksgiving and Christmas is what we did.
Okay.
We did it before the night meeting in, um, December.
Christmas, December, okay.
Have we already changed that, we're only having one meeting in December?
Yeah, that's already, that's, that's already on the schedule.
One meeting in December, one meeting in November this year.
Correct, right.
Anything else?
We, uh, before we adjourn, real quick, we talked a couple of months ago, uh, about us, staff giving you guys a, kind of a quarterly report on the, uh, on subdivision update, kind of a little bit more detailed than what we've been getting, we're compiling that, we, we'll, we hope to have that, too, in the next month or two, so we're, we're trying to get all that data in and get it organized, and so we should have it decent.
Training sessions throughout the new year, what, four hours we have to have?
Right, well, and let me, uh, I'm glad you brought that up, let me just, uh, talk about that a little bit. Several of you have already met the four-hour requirement, because we've had a few things going on throughout this year, there's a few that still need some hours. There's, uh, kind of a, a little, uh, glitch, for lack of a better word, oh, it's not really a glitch. Uh, the state legislature, the past session, passed a, a bill that basically says that one hour of your training has to be related to private property rights and zoning, planning issues and that. Right now, I'm trying to work out with Sam Edwards from the GNRC, Greater National Regional Council, uh, to come and do, uh, a one-hour session, you know, with us, what I was trying to, the thing to do was try to do it, maybe we could just get here early on the eighteenth, since you're all gonna be coming here anyway, maybe you start over here, do the training, and then retire over to the, uh, the courthouse. Uh, that applies whether you've already got your four hours or not, I mean, that was something